Well, being back, our time is eight thirty. We'll start up again with our consent calendar. Those are items seven through ten on our agenda this evening. I do see one member of the public that would like to speak on this apparently. Call and user one. So is is there anybody that would like to pull an item off consent first off? I'm going to ask our call in user one. I'm going to unmute you. If you would like to speak on any item on consent, please let us know.
I presume you can hear me now. This is Brent Bardslay again. One oh four eight, one oh four eight Manhattan.
Yes.
This is an advisory message in regards to the December first approval of minutes. Item on the agenda. I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I don't know what number that is.
Well, let me ask you this. Do you want to? Do you want to pull this item off the consent calendar first of all?
Well, I have a comment on it. If you if you'd like to pull it off, that's okay with me.
Let's do that. Let's let's follow the the procedure and okay. So we'll take that under advisement. Thank you. If you have a comment on it, then please comment when we when we reach it. Okay, so I'll mute you now. Would anyone like to bring a motion with regard to the remaining items on the consent calendar? That's items eight through ten.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move items eight through ten.
Okay, is there a second to this motion?
A second then.
Okay, council member Willie moves to approve consent eight through ten. Council member way seconds. Council member Moore, you have your hand up. Would you like to make a comment on the motion on the table?
Yes, I need to abstain from. Let's see item. Well, item seven, you're it looks like you're pulling off. I need to abstain from item eight, at least half of it. So I'm going to abstain from all of item eight because that we had different council members during that. But you do have a quorum to to approve that. So I just want to bring that up and.
Well, let me, let me, let me just push back on that and to confirm with the city attorney that we actually are able to vote on minutes to which we did not attend the meeting. Is that correct, Madam City Attorney?
You can if you've listened to the to the recording. Usually people will abstain unless it's necessary to have to reach a quorum to approve the minutes. So you could consider amending the motion on the floor to move the consent items with those council members not present for the minutes.
What I think is a technical point of law that you are allowed to vote on minutes, even if you were not present at the meeting because the law contemplates.
The short, the short answer is yes, then.
Yes, okay, great. So does that change your perspective, Council Member Moore? Or would you still like to potentially bifurcate this into two separate parts? I totally understand if you do, but I I believe you are allowed to vote on item eight, even though you weren't in the meeting, so to speak, at that time.
Right, okay, I will, since the city attorney has weighed in on that and I was present for the entire meeting. And thank you, Heather.
Okay, very good. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call on the on the motion on the table?
Council member Moore.
Aye.
Council member way.
Aye.
Council member Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we'll now go to item number seven, which is the December first city council minutes. We did have a member of the public, Brent, who was raising his hand. And I see that you're raising your hand again. So I think this is self explanatory. It's the minutes for December first meeting. And so Brent, I will now unmute you. Welcome, you'll have to unmute yourself as well, however.
Can you hear me now, Darcy?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, again, this is the I'm I'm my comment is an advisory on the December first council meeting minutes. I on December first, I tried to call in and speak to the weed abatement item on on the December first agenda, but I was not able to get through via the zoom via the zoom method. I'm dialing on a landline, no internet access and no cable TV. I I hope the council remembers that there are a subset of residents in the community who who do who do not have internet access and do not have cable TV. Many of us lost our internet access when the library closed. So the only way that I can call in is is through a landline and and just hope that it works. The only way. And so what I did was follow the instructions on the agenda exactly as well as I could. And I was not able to 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 get through yesterday. I guess today's Tuesday, so on Monday I worked with one of the city staff in the in the in the technical department. His name was Pete, I think. He's a very helpful fellow. And 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 he determined that the problem was the instructions on the agenda, on the written agenda for the council meeting are incorrect. The the phone number is is does not work as as stated. You have to dial a different number, which is the one, Darcy, that you mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. And that's the one I'm using tonight. Unfortunately, that number is not on on the agenda. It was not on the on the December first agenda and it's not on tonight's agenda also. So I again, this is an advisory message. I'm not asking for you not to approve those those minutes because I was able to to write my comments for that meeting and I delivered it. I hand delivered it to the city council or the city hall, I guess. I hope hopefully all the all the council members have those comments. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay, so just to reiterate what I said, I'm not going to repeat the whole thing. But my my main comment was that the that the weed abatement item should be deferred, in my opinion, until the COVID is no longer an issue. I'm not sure if you heard the news, it was just a few hours ago, but Governor Newsom has requested 5,000 more body bags because he's expecting a very significant increase in the number of deaths from COVID. And it seems to me that the city council needs to put on their their common sense hats and realize that garden garden weeds are not the most important problem in Cupertino right now. I think all hands on deck should be focusing in Cupertino, city staff and city council on the homeless problem and getting the getting the homeless safe COVID safe shelter and also to concentrate on being proactive about what kind of budget adjustments you're going to require due to the due to the to the business businesses failures that we're seeing due to COVID.
Thank you, Brent. You've reached your three minutes and we we have heard you. Let's bring it back to council at this point. Unless staff would like to follow up on any of the comments made by 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 the member of the public, Brent. I understand that we did make the correction. It was an issue, I believe, with Zoom in terms of defunct number that was provided previously. But we have corrected that. Is that is that confirmed? Madam City Clerk or City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have made that correction and going forward, the number will be correctly published on all city agendas. Regarding Mr. Bardslay's comment, I understand he wasn't able to access the meeting. However, the weed abatement item was on consent and it was setting a hearing date for the public hearing, which is actually occurring in on January 19th. So Mr. Bardslay can attend that hearing and he can make his comments then, if that's.
And okay, and then Madam City Attorney, did you hear any items that need follow up from a legal perspective on behalf of the city?
No, I believe the city's done everything it needs to do by correcting the agenda going forward. And we have posted notices before this meeting.
Okay, okay, very good. So would anyone like to, at this point, if we want to commence with a discussion, would anyone like to bring forward a motion with regard to consent calendar item number seven?
I'll bring the motion to move item seven.
Is there a second?
A second.
I counsel member Willie motions and Vice Mayor Chow seconds to approve item number seven. Does anyone care to discuss this item? Okay, we will conduct a roll call. I don't see any hands. So Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call vote.
Council member Moore.
Abstain.
Council member way.
Aye.
Council member Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with more abstaining.
Okay, our next item is second reading ordinances, which we don't have any items under. And following that is public hearings. Our item number 11 is a subject of one of our postponements. However, it was only half postponed. We have bird safe design still there. The dark skies ordinance has been bifurcated from this and set to a date certain of January 19th, 2021. At this point, I'd like to ask staff to present a brief update on any potential changes that have been made to the dark sky ordinance as we had discussed during the discussion on the postponement, followed by their full presentation for the birth safe design aspect of this agenda item. And so I'm going to ask that staff present that in its entirety before we go to council questions with regard to to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ben Furu, Director of Community Development. With us today, we have Eric Serrano, Senior Planner from the Planning Division, as well as Pew Goche, excuse me, Planning Manager from the Planning Division as well. Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, the the presentation for the for the dark sky, that is all the changes that's been made since the last meeting as opposed to just the streetlights. Is that correct?
A summary update would be good. I think if you can encapsulate it within five minutes, that would be ideal. And then the bulk of this is the birth safe design. So if you can operate within those parameters. And also, it's something that I was planning on making part of our items. Do you have a time estimate of how long these presentations would take approximately?
Yeah, the presentation for the for the for the dark sky should be should be fairly quick. We also shrunk our birth safe presentation just now. Actually, so we haven't had a chance to time that one yet, but it should be shorter than than your than it otherwise would have been. I would say maybe around seven minutes for the birth safe and probably half of that for the for dark skies.
Okay, so roughly 10 minutes. Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, with that, I will hand it off to Eric Serrano and Pew Goche.
So Eric Serrano with the Planning Division. I'll just do the quick update on the dark sky and show those proposed changes right now. So there isn't too much to update. So the exposed street lights is something that we initially brought as an exhibit on the December first meeting. So we just incorporated that into the ordinance as it really changed from that exhibit, except that we did refine it a little bit to allow for lighting to be attached to fences. The outdoor solar pathway lights, we made a modification that to allow solar powered pathway lights that are 25 lumens or less to remain illuminated past 11. We did look into lighting in the public right away, so we didn't make any changes with that. And we discussed this as public works and that lighting seemed is more of a public necessity and convenience. We also, in our discussion, were informed how lighting, specifically streetlights, have been recently retrofitted to be more energy efficient. And the Lemic layer had been kind of modified for that old Cobra style with the bulb bulb was exposed to be kind of recessed and then pointed downwards and not to light trespasses as much as before and to not kind of point to the sky. So kind of already dark sky ish. We did look into turning the lights on and off, but that there was some concern that could create a potentially unsafe situation with kind of pedestrians, bicyclists and vehicles kind of going from dark to light, dark to light. And there was some concern with that. And then potential dimming lights, that that is possible, that would require another retrofit of of lights throughout the city to kind of update those sensors or, you know, even potentially replace the whole light fixture. Another update that we did make was the term watt. So we updated that to provide different light measurements to determine compliance. So applicants or property owners can determine or can show compliance by wattage of the incandescent bulb or an LED equivalent or providing lumens for that light fixture. We did for we did reduce the color temperature from 3,000 Kelvin to 2,700 Kelvin. So essentially from soft white to warm light glow. And then we didn't make any changes to critical areas of illumination. But just to note that the California Building Code does require minimal levels of illumination and then the the energy code comes in to to have maximum illumination levels and to help prevent light pollution. And that's all I have for dark sky.
Also, I can present with regard to the birth safe regulations. As you recall, this was a work program item from the I'm sorry, can you see my screen right now?
No, we're not, we're not viewing your screen. Yes.
This is a council work program item for the fiscal year 1920. We're basically looking for consistency with the general plan and adoption of bird safe regulations. Again, just a refresher in terms of birds, the intent for adopting bird safe regulations is because studies suggest that between 100 million and 1 billion birds are killed each year due to bird collision and they occur most commonly because of exposed reflective glass or or highly transparent glass, because birds believe that it is an extension of the exterior. And also when there are bright nighttime lights which can disorient birds in an urban environment such as ours. And so therefore, the two main factors linked to bird mortality are building design trends and nighttime lighting. And we also looked at policies and ordinances in other cities while developing. And we also did additional research in developing the regulations that are proposed. We went to planning commission in October 2019. Again, we had two community wide meetings in February 2020. We had got a planning commission recommendation on October 27th. They, of course, had recommended a combined ordinance, but this we're focusing on the bird safe regulation only ordinance that is proposed and presented in the packet for tonight. Again, the intent of the bird safe regulations are twofold. One is to reduce the building design elements and lighting features that are hazardous to birds. And therefore, they would essentially protect and also help protect the natural environment. These are just examples of how exposed reflective glass are highly reflective and birds don't perceive these as actual barriers to their flight paths and end up colliding with the glass and dying essentially. Additionally, bright lighting also is causes buildings to become overly reflective and glass to be over reflective. And also they attract birds and cause what is called fatal light attraction, which also cause bird mortality. We looked at bird safe policies in San Francisco, Toronto, Portland, and also locally in Alameda, Santa Cruz, Oakland and Sunnyvale. There are multitude of bird safe solutions, which are just physical barriers on glasses, on glass and glazing, etching, fritting, any number of methods to reduce bird collision. Finally, we basically came up with the proposed regulations. They would apply to new or remodel of primary or accessory buildings, replacement of glass windows and features, building permit and or development projects whenever you come in with one of when you are required to do one of those things or if you replace. Again, I want to remind the council that there are some exterior light regulations that are involved in this bird safety ordinance as well, since those items are intricately linked with bird mortality. There are certain exemptions to the bird safe ordinance, historic structures, first floor commercial storefronts to a height of 15 feet. Additionally, the planning commission recommended addition of two additional categories. One was residential development in R1 zoning districts outside of what is what are considered bird sensitive areas and also 100% affordable housing developments. The standards would apply to facades, to the the area of the entire facade. And essentially, the calculation is done to state that no more than 10% of untreated glass would occur between the ground and 60 feet above it. And then any areas above 60 feet, no more than 5% of the facade would be untreated. With regard to the standard compliance treatments, there are multi again, as shown previously, there are many, many features that can be used, window montons, fritting, exterior and sex screens, just any number of architectural design features that can be added on the outside of the buildings. The ordinance also allows for an alternative compliance method and that could be recommended by a qualified biologist. It would be peer reviewed by the city's third party biologist and then approved by the city. With regard to lighting, there are non residential indoor lighting requirements, which would require time switch control devices or automatic sense occupancy sensors. And these are generally already required by the building code and the Title 24. And so there's also requirement that these indoor not in non residential buildings, indoor lighting would either turn off by 11:00 PM or two hours after close of business. And then, of course, after that, they would be on the motion sensors. As mentioned previously, there are some outdoor lighting requirements also included. There would be essentially outdoor lighting would need to be shielded and directed downward. There there are night hours, so essentially any lighting after 11:00 PM would either be motion sensor or would have to be extinguished. There are exceptions to that. And then you would require automated control systems to make sure that those lightings come on and off on motion sensor. There are also illumination standards. Those are already existing in the municipal code. So there's languages referencing that section, those existing sections in the municipal code. Again, security lighting is allowed and would continue to be allowed. There are specific requirements for service station canopies to make sure that those lights are flushed and recessed into the canopies themselves and that there are no bright lights on the outside of the canopy that point upward. There are also certainly prohibitions and exceptions listed in the outdoor lighting section. With regard to site planning and building design, there are requirements to require that flight paths are not funneled towards building facades for essentially for new development or for new new landscape projects that might do that. And then avoid the use of highly reflective glass or transparent glass in general in all projects. And also not to include last features, transparent building corners, freestanding glass walls or any elements that could that birds could perceive as being transparent or as things that they can see other vegetation through. So those are also not allowed. As far as environmental review goes, this ordinance is exempt from CEQA by categorically by a number of sections. And so these include, you know, regulations that are being adopted to ensure maintenance, restoration, enhancement or protection of the environment. They would not result in any expansion of use, minor alterations to land use, etc. So in essence, this project is exempt from CEQA. We did do a number of public outreach and public noticing for this project. We had legal and display eyes that are required by the government code. The agenda was also posted as required by the government code. In addition, as mentioned before, we had two community meetings back in February and have talked to many, many advocates and people on both sides of the issue. With that, staff concludes its presentation and recommends that you can the public, the council, conduct the public hearing and adopt the draft resolution. My apologies on the typo there, but that the council find the actions exempt from CEQA and amend the municipal code by adding the new chapter and amending chapter 19.08 definitions to implement implement the proposed bird safe regulations. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Pew, as well as Eric and Ben. I'll bring it back to council for questions. Please raise your hand if you'd like to ask questions. All right, John, again, we have three minutes for each council member. And so if that timer would start, Council Member Willie.
Yeah, so the first question, I mean, that very quick presentation, so I'm not quite sure I captured it correct or not. Under what appeared to be the exemptions were 100% affordable housing projects. Now, are those included or exempt from the bird safe glazing?
It would be exempt from the bird safe glazing requirements.
And so that was one of the ones where our previous mayor was concerned that, you know, why would we exempt 100% affordable housing when it's such a minimal cost? And yet those buildings are going to be fairly high because they're high density. And did staff think about that? I mean, did they look at his concern? Is there a reason to not exempt them?
There is and no reason to include them because we when we did some a little bit of research in terms of the cost of implementing the bird safe, the physical implement, the physical improvements needed to implement the bird safe regulations, the cost of that added between two and a half and 5% to the cost of the the glazing itself. And so to the window systems. However, we wanted to leave it up to the council to decide whether it wished to exempt or not the 100% affordable housing, particularly because the planning commission felt pretty strongly about including that as an exempted category.
Okay, good, so we could still address that. The other one was the outdoor lighting and that when I heard that it has to be on motion sensitive in motion sensors, and is that across the board? I mean, I think that in a lot of, you know, like parking lots or especially elderly home areas, you know, if they see that it's dark, they're not going to move in that direction. You know, where a motion sensor, the person's got to be moving in that direction for it to go on. So I'd I'd really really like to understand if, you know, lighted pathways that are important are going to be allowed to stay lit facing downward? And that's where I get confused. If it's facing downward, does it not require a motion sensor?
To the extent of the building code has requirements with regard to access and lighting that is required for safety, those would still continue to be on. This is with regard to excessive lighting that could be on after 11:00 PM. So any lights that are required to be on as a result of building code or any other regulations with regard to safety, those would still continue to be on. The code also has an exemption for store pathway lights. And so if those are on, if those are put in in areas, those would continue to remain on as well.
Yeah, so so I still heard you mention 11:00 PM. But, you know, when you have pathways, you know, that do have trip hazards and things like that and you do have cleaning crews and things like that that work at night. Again, if it's dark, you know, they may not be going there for fear that it's not lit and the motion sensor, if if it's a, you know, a traveled path and as long as they're focusing in the downward direction and the property owner felt that they needed to be left on, is this ordinance now going to negate that?
As long as the lights are on motion sensor, that's what this ordinance allows at this point after 11:00 PM.
So if he didn't want the motion sensor because it's a specific path that he feels is used at various times of the night, you're saying it would not be allowed? He would have to put motion sensors on them all?
As long as they're not replaced, so it for existing lights, if you have a light today, you do not have to go back and change that light to be a motion sensor light.
Okay, that's a good point.
If you have a light today that you intend on keeping forever, that's the light you have, and this ordinance does not require you to go back and change that light.
But for the shining down doesn't also occur?
None of the, no, none of the requirements that are proposed right now, existing lighting that is installed as of tonight or as of, at the date of the effectiveness of this.
Yeah, just another case in point. I mean, I think colleges in the parking lots, they use those blue lights. And, you know, obviously, I would think you would not want those blue lights that essentially, I think, indicate a telephone. So if somebody's in the parking lot and feels there's some perpetrator nearby, they can rush to the blue light, pick up the phone, call campus security. I mean, that's just kind of one instance where you would not want the light to be on a motion sensor, you would want it to be left on.
All emergency lights are exempt from that.
Great, okay, emergency lights, okay, great, thank you.
All right, thanks, John. I just want to let you know that it, that did take an extra three minutes, which I, I will take from your deliberative time. But good questions, thank you for posing them. Any other member of council, council member Wei?
Yes, I'm gonna follow up with John's hundred percent affordable housing. So as far as I understand, it's a hundred percent affordable housing project, not like a project that's not a hundred, hundred percent housing, but has a hundred percent housing building in it, right?
Correct, it's for, it's for a project that has, where all the units are affordable to, to income levels that are not market rate.
Okay, so for example, the Westport project has some affordable housing buildings, but since the project is not a hundred percent affordable housing, so that's not exempt.
That's a very interesting question, but the building itself, if it sits on its own parcel, could be exempt, but it would need a little more thought to that.
Yeah, because, because I, I, as, when I was reading, it says a hundred percent housing project. So I was trying to distinguish, for example, our Raranda would be a hundred percent housing project, but Westport would not be a hundred percent housing project, right? Because that's a, a development project. So if they have a housing, I think they do have a housing that's hundred percent affordable housing for seniors, but that building should not be exempt.
Councilman Wei, that the intent, the intent is for, like you said, a hundred percent, a hundred percent affordable type of project such as Raranda. In the case, in the example that you mentioned, if the, somehow the project itself has split from a mixed use project into an affordable, hundred percent affordable housing project, then that portion, that will be exempt. But as of now, right now, it does not apply to mixed use projects.
Got it, okay. My second question is, this ordinance doesn't include school district, right? Because school district might run some sports or they might have some lighting needs beyond eleven P M. Is school district facilities included in the ordinance?
This does not apply to the school districts, is, is my understanding. They, they have their own regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Wei, you have forty five seconds left, should you choose to use it? We have Vice Mayor Chow next.
Oh, hi. So, so the, this ordinance doesn't apply to any of the existing lighting interior or exterior. And for the new lighting, it doesn't apply to the landscaping that's low on the ground lighting, right? Those can still be turned on late at night. And it doesn't apply to emergency light, as you said. And then if necessary, they can apply for special permit for areas that they, where they do need a light to be on overnight, right?
So they, this would only apply if somebody came in to, to, came in to change, wanted to change lighting. And so they would, at that point, this, this ordinance would apply.
Okay, so I, I remember last time there were two exceptions that we kind of disagree with Planning Commission. When is the hundred percent affordable housing? I think they, if they are concerned about the cost, they could find other ways, they don't have to. Because this is a forward looking ordinance. We cannot replace any of the older ones, but we are expecting there will be a lot more buildings in the future, so, and birds will run into them. And I don't see why we should exempt them. And then also, I would, the other exception was the single family home. The last time it was only, the only, this ordinance only applies to the bird sensitive area. But I do think this needs to apply to the entire city. Because even my house, I, which is absolutely near vocal, everyone knows that, it's in, in the city center. We had birds struck on both our front and back door, and we have bird nests both in front yard and backyard. So these birds do live everywhere in our city. It's just not just a bird safe area, bird sensitive area. So I do think, at least for, we should apply this for new buildings going forward. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore, do you have any questions?
Sure. I noticed there was something added here about glass treatments must be visible to all bird species, have high color contrast with the glass and be applied to the outermost glass. Prior to publication of the list, the Planning Department may review information available from interest groups such as the National Audubon Society. I'm curious what kind of glass treatments would be visible to all bird species, and I'm going to assume that we have not discovered all bird species on the planet at this point. So we might not know the answer. Wanted to bring that up. The Planning Commission also, with regards to the hundred percent affordable housing development exemption, that's with regards to providing the city council with the opportunity to try to reduce costs for affordable housing development. That's what that's about. And I am noticing that there are several items within the, the parsed out Bird Safe Ordinance which do relate with lighting. And we've established that we, that, that I, one of our largest employers is concerned with the, the dark skies, which is about lighting. And, and also, they've apparently expressed some concerns about the Bird Safe Ordinance. And I think we're talking about seventy percent of our commercial space, office space being leased to, to this employer. And so I, if they have concern and, and don't feel like they've had a chance to weigh in on all aspects, I am concerned about that. So just going back to the beginning, glass treatments must be visible to all bird species. What, what does that in practice actually mean?
It just means there has to be a high contrast between the kind of application that is being considered and the actual glazing to make sure that that is visible to the birds. And this kind of, this change came about from a comment from the Audubon Society. And this was the language that they had, is very close to the language that they had proposed with regard to this issue. Because they felt that the existing standard that had originally been proposed could be strengthened by adding this phrase.
Would you happen to have a, a visual on what that would look like?
I'm just gonna.
It says high color contrast here.
So I'm just gonna share my screen here. If you look at any of these treatments that have been applied to the glass, all of these would function as applicable under that particular regulation, where there is contrast between the actual glazing and the kind of treatment that is proposed. So the, the metal panels on this particular glazing here, the white color on top of the, the, the glass on the picture on the far left. Similarly, the, the fritting that is on all these other glazing at the bottom here.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Moore, you're about forty seconds over, so same will apply to your deliberative time. Councilmember Chow, you still have roughly half a minute. Councilmember Wei, you have about forty five seconds, so. Let, let me go back through in order, since I think, I think Councilmember Wei was first in asking questions.
Okay, so I'm gonna use my forty five seconds to echo Kitty's concern about that all bird species. I think, I think I did make a note of that before on my memo. I'm a little concerned about all bird species because there, it just encompasses too much. So I wonder if it could be just all local bird species or just birds? I wonder what, what's our original language before we change it? That, that's it.
Okay, that, that did sound like a question to me. And I think we have the redlined version, so we could refer to that. Essentially, I see nods from staff. Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, do you have a follow up?
Can we get an update on the five requests made by the Audubon Society? Are they integrated or not? If not, why?
But I can go through that. Their first request, and, and we're talking only about the Bird Safe issue at this point. And so their first request was to add in the purpose statement, a statement about human health. And we did not add that to the Bird Safe Only Ordinance, because it was addressing only bird safety. Their second issue was with regard to the, this, the question that both Councilmember Moore and Wei asked with regard to the glass treatments being visible to all bird species, et cetera. And that was added in Section nineteen one oh two zero three zero B two. So I'm gonna share my screen to indicate where that was changed. So this is from the combined ordinance, but the same language does appear in the Bird Safe Only Ordinance as well. The third issue that they brought up was with regard to the consulting with interest groups such as the National Audubon, such as the Audubon Society, we added that language as well. The other issue that they brought up. Eric, do, do you have that list?
I think the other two are for lighting, so.
Yeah, the other two are color temperature and critical areas of illumination.
So for the Bird Safe Ordinance only, we did not have any color lighting identified. And we did not make the edit for the critical areas of illumination because we were concerned about, because the critical areas of illumination are mainly for safety and for making sure that light wells, stairwells are not, you know, darker or areas that could potentially be, I don't want to say dangerous, but problem areas continue to have illumination that would make people safe, feel safe.
Okay, at this point, since everyone is pretty much exhausted their time, and in the interest of time, I'll forego my questions. A lot of them were asked, in fact, so. Good questions, thank you very much. And let's move this to public commentary. So I see hands beginning to raise. At this point, our first three members of the public are Rhoda Frye, Shawnee Kleinhouse, and Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I was a bit taken aback when I saw exceptions made for the affordable housing unit. If you've got birds in a tree, and on one side, there's conventional housing, and on the other side, there's affordable housing, why would the birds be treated any differently? So in the interest of bird equity, I think we should remove any provisions for how affordable housing is treated with respect to birds. And I've also submitted written commentary, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Rhoda. Our next speaker is Shawnee Kleinhouse, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Dashal Leeds. Welcome, Shawnee.
Good evening again, Mayor Paul and council. I would like to clarify why we asked for the contrast and for birds to be able to see the glass. I think if this is an impediment, then go ahead and remove that sentence. But our main concern with, with some U V products that are not effective and are marketed as a solution, but they, the people don't see them and, and a lot of bird species don't see them. But I think the staff can take care of that in the list that they're preparing for what products can be approved, and we'll be happy to provide input on that. So if that sentence is a concern, then okay, just remove it. Otherwise, I would really encourage you to go ahead and, and move this forward. Been working for a long time, everybody had time to review this, like we said before and while. It's important to hear everybody, it's also important to do the right thing by the birds and to move ahead with, I would prefer to see a citywide. I don't really have an opinion about whether affordable housing should be exempt or not. Sometimes there is an increase in cost, even if it's light, it can be really difficult for affordable housing, so I get it. But I'll leave that to you guys, and please do move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawnee. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham, followed by Dashal Leeds, followed by Rose Grimes. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. Please vote to approve this Bird Safe Design Amendment. Our city has been a leader on the behalf of the environment in so many ways. I really find it hard to understand exactly what all the, all the pieces and parts are that people keep talking about. I'm glad that Shawnee Kleinhouse has been able to be here to answer those because we really are talking about the species of birds that live in our area and the ones who travel through. Nobody from China, let's just say, as far as a bird, because they live over there, they live in Europe, but they don't live here. So please, please, please. This has been on the books for quite a long time, and we are there. It's a well-written, excuse me, it's a well-written amendment. I think the staff has done an excellent, excellent job. I've spoken on behalf of birds for a while. I speak of them because they cannot speak for themselves. Millions of birds collide with windows every year, that's the point. Our, our, our numbers are going down, what was it, billions of birds, twenty-five percent of our birds. Residential homes, businesses are all part of the problem, and we need to resolve it. During COVID, I put birds on, on next door and people responded. It really mattered to them to have birds in their area. And we can do something, what I consider relatively straightforward, it's been planned, it's done in other cities, that we could do it now. We've done so many things for our environment, and I think we should just go ahead and do it. On my morning walk, I saw fifteen birds, from the largest, the red-tailed hawk, down to the tiniest, little lesser goldfinch. The photos that I have shown include many of them. Anyway, I urge you to support Cupertino's birds and take the recommended action as specified in the report. Your support will go a long way to educating all residents of the role that we play in the long-term health of our environment and also saving birds who bring us the thrill of flight, life and color in small packages. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Connie. Our next speaker is Dashal Leeds, followed by Rose Grimes, followed by. Our next speaker is Dashal Leeds, followed by Rose Grimes, followed by Jill Halloran. Welcome, Dashal.
Hello, this is Dashal Leeds again with the C R Club Lumber Piedad Chapter. I would just like to echo Connie and Shawnee's comments before me. I really don't have a whole lot to add. I think they put it really well. This has been a very long process, and I think we've had a considerable opportunity for public stakeholder engagement on this, and I think our ordinance is ready to go. I know that there's been some discussion over some minor language changes, and I hope that, you know, if you do want to make these changes, that you motion to pass the ordinance tonight with the minor amendments. I think we can still hopefully proceed with the first reading tonight of this ordinance. Thank you so much for your leadership on this, and I'll defer my time.
Very good, Dash. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Rose Grimes, followed by Jill Halloran, followed by Linda Ruthraff. Welcome, Rose.
Thanks very much. I certainly endorse Connie, Shawnee's, and Dashal's comments. I agree that minor modifications to the language could be made. I understand the concerns about low-income housing and the additional costs. As Shawnee put that really well. And very much encourage you to move forward tonight. A lot of work, a lot of comment, a lot of engagement has gone into these ordinances. Well, this one specifically, the Bird Safe of the moment that we're discussing. It's indeed intriguing that one of our major employers, I presume this to be Apple, is concerned about this. I'm speaking to you from one of their products, so I'm a big supporter of the technology. But I do feel that if they, as a local business, have a concern, that they could be here expressing their concern rather than taking things offline in other types of dialogue with the city council. So I really, I agree with the previous speakers that there's been a lot of opportunity for public comment and the expression of concerns. And city staff has taken those concerns very much to heart and has made a lot of tweaks along the way that then themselves have been revealed to public comment and discussed significantly. So I really think we're ready to move ahead, and we will all be proud of ourselves to have done so tonight and look back on a really positive change for the community. Yield my time.
Thank you, Rose. Our next speaker is Jill Halloran, followed by Linda Ruthraff, followed by a phone number ending nine two oh five. Welcome, Jill.
Hi, thank you very much. Yeah, I just want to reiterate, as I said before, that if you don't like bugs, you sort of gotta like birds. We have an annual termite swarm in our backyard on the first rainy day of the season. And there are, I actually love to watch it because the silvery termites fly around, and the birds go crazy. The birds, they catch them on the wing, they catch them on the ground. They just go nuts, and there are hundreds of birds in our small backyard all at the same time. Anyway, that's just one tiny example of the amount of insect eating that these birds do. But besides that, you know, as other people have said, we enjoy them. They're like rock stars. They sing, and they're beautiful to look at. I think we also have to share the planet with other species, whether we like it or not. And I think we need to realize that when we benefit species, they benefit us as well. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. Our next speaker is Linda Ruthraff, followed by caller with phone number ending nine two oh five. Welcome, Linda.
Hi, this is Linda Ruthraff again. I am the conservation chair for the Santa Clara Valley chapter of the California Native Plant Society. We are losing our biodiversity at an alarming rate. And so much of it is because we are losing habitat. A lot of people are creating habitat in their backyards. They're putting in native plants, and they're doing things like putting up bird feeders and bird baths, which is all really, really lovely until the birds come, they're attracted, and then they, you know, crash into the windows. And many of our buildings, our large buildings, the glass becomes very reflective, and the poor birds think that they're going to be flying through some more vegetation. Instead, they crash into the window. I know that people find it very disturbing when they have a bird crash into their window and die. They feel badly about it. They need to know that there are things that they can do about it. It's education, and it's also, you know, regulation as to how we build our buildings and live with the natural world around us. Having the natural world around us improves our mental health. It improves our physical health, and I think that we need to be good stewards of the earth. So I hope you pass this tonight. It's been well-vetted, very thoughtfully put together, and I think it would be wonderful for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speaker is phone number ending nine two oh five. Welcome.
Thank you. Once again, this is Joe Spalding in Oakland, California. I absolutely love birds. My favorite bird is the red-tailed hawk, and I love seeing them whenever I can. My concern here is I do not believe that most of the concern for birds in this talk is genuine. I think that if we're talking about preserving bird life or bird equity or bird whatever when it comes to bird law, we'd be talking about, you know, the population of birds that get slaughtered by automobiles equal to the population of humans in the United States. Between eighty-nine million and three hundred and forty million every year get killed by cars, but I don't see us talking about traffic calming in Cupertino here. What I see here is an attempt to make housing more expensive and buildings in general more expensive above fifteen feet tall. I too have a problem with the one-hundred percent affordability exemption. It should be a much lower percentage than that to exempt from that type of building. It's, you know, frankly disturbing to think that there are other Americans in this country thinking things like we should take care of the birds more than we should take care of the people that have been displaced from their homes. When it comes to weighing bird equity against people equity, we're gonna have to side with people equity for a while here. And, you know, we're not gonna solve biodiversity in Cupertino alone. I hear that about solving the housing crisis all the time. I don't understand why people are pretending to take the mantle up for biodiversity when it comes to some windows on some buildings. I do understand that the impact is gonna be an increase in price, and that is absolutely more transparent than any window in the city of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We don't have any more speakers from the public, and so I will bring it back to council. And again, I would like to ask for a motion to be placed on the table prior to our discussion. And so is anyone willing to bring forth such a motion?
So the question I have is, on the agenda that I have, it only has one ordinance, and so it doesn't have them broken out. Is it the same ordinance, and it's only gonna apply to the bird safe? Or do they make two separate ordinances? This is the agenda that I have.
No, that's an excellent question. There is an alternative draft bird safe only ordinance. However, it is not enumerated. It is included in our agenda as attachment D to our item number eleven. And so a default ordinance would, or a default motion, rather, would request that ordinance be read by title only by the city clerk for the first reading and identified as attachment D to our agenda item eleven.
So would I say conduct the first reading of the alternative draft bird safety only ordinance?
Of attachment D, yes.
Yes, okay.
So would you like to make that motion, Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Okay. So Councilmember Willie is moving that the ordinance identified by attachment D to our agenda item eleven be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof. Is there a second to this motion for the purposes of our discussion at this point? I see Councilmember Chow has her hand raised. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow.
I'd like to second, but I'd also like to add amendment.
Okay. Let me see if this is procedurally appropriate. Madam City Attorney, can a seconder of a motion propose a friendly amendment or amendments to that motion?
Yes.
Yes?
To the mover of the motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, okay, well, have at it.
I'm going to share my screen. You can see my screen?
Yes.
So I'd like to strike out the under section B. So this is attachment D, the bird safe ordinance only. Under section B, the glass treatments, I'd like to strike out, be visible to all bird species, so that it only reads, "Glass treatments must have high color contrast with the glass and be applied to outermost glass." I think that's more specific. Maybe, I suppose staff will provide recommendations, right? And we don't need to specify that in the ordinance. And the second idea is to strike out the residential development R1 from the list that's exempted. And the third idea is strike out a hundred percent affordable housing development from the list that's exempted.
Councilmember Willie, do you accept those friendly amendments?
So the first strikeout, yes. Yeah, I'll take all three.
Okay, and I, just for the formality of it, Vice Mayor Chow, I assume that you accept your own friendly amendment as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a modified motion on the table. Would anyone care to begin deliberations? And, you know, I won't really. So John, you have a couple of minutes, two minutes. Councilmember Vice Mayor Chow, you have three. Councilmember Wei, you have your full five minutes. You ended up with fifteen seconds. Councilmember Moore, four minutes, twenty seconds. But I think you guys get the point. Would anyone like to begin the deliberative process here for the motion that's on the table? I see Councilmember Willie with his hand raised.
I would just kind of make a couple of general comments. I mean, twenty years ago, fifty years ago, probably there was really no understanding about bird strikes in buildings. And we learn as we go, and this goes way beyond just bird strikes. You know, the impacts, you know, with the climate change and so on and so forth. We need to improve as we go, and I think this is one example where we know more than we did twenty years ago or longer. So with that being said, I think this is a good forward step in the right direction. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. That was half a minute. Anyone next? Councilmember Wei.
I'll just take ten seconds. I like all the three amendments, and I am very happy with the ordinances.
Okay, great. You really did take less than ten seconds. Anyone else? With their, no hands raised? Councilmember Moore.
Okay, I have a question for Vice Mayor Chow. You had some ex parte communications with Rod Deardon. Would you please repeat what that was regarding the bird safe design?
Not much detail. I just was wondering how come they were not aware of this amendment? So I asked about what, how informed are they? And he said that they are actually supportive of the dark sky and bird safe ordinances. But they feel there are certain languages are not specific enough, so they are hoping their engineers, not their attorneys, will take a look and make it better. So they hope to provide some clarifications in January.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I don't know what they, any detail, because they are just starting to look at that. And I did ask how come they didn't know. Turns out, this time, usually the city would present this kind of new project in the LAC, the Chamber Legislative Committee, but they didn't present it this time. And Deb, I asked Deb. Deb said.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry to interrupt Vice Mayor, but the way the mayor has set up this agenda item, I need to cut you off so that I can actually get my questions in. And I kind of have a problem with that because this is now an ordinance which will affect every single R1 home. And I don't know that everyone in the city is aware of that. So now it's been changed back, okay? So that every single residential home is going to be affected. And so now, you know, I kind of question whether or not the people who, you know, dialed in on this meeting were aware that you're affecting the entire city and that that has been a change from what was previously on the agenda. So I have a concern with that. And again, I have a concern that if they, if they wanted to, the commercial owners wanted to talk about the bird safe element in January, they are not getting that opportunity.
Okay, are there your comments, Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, very good. So just as FYI, you have roughly a minute and a half left. I don't know if we, did we hear from Councilmember Chow formally on this section? It was Councilmembers Wei, Willie, and Moore.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Chow, do you have any comments at this point?
So I proposed this. I think this was the original staff recommendation, and then it was changed only after a planning commission had a different recommendation. So it's not like it's different. But maybe a better process, I think, for the future is for the staff report to raise this kind of options as questions for the council. I've seen that's how some other city has done, is ask this as questions that's lifted out. And so the public know that this is something that will be determined. Okay? So it's not either one way or the other. And then as for the communication, how much time I have? As for the communication.
You have about a minute and forty-five seconds.
Okay. As for the communication with the business community, I'm a little unhappy that we are relying on chamber only to reach out to the business community. We have our business license list. We should collect emails from all the business licensees, licensees. And we should build an email list of all the restaurant owners and all the shopping mall owners, so that when we have this kind of ordinances, the city should be sending out email directly to all the business owners. Maybe we don't have to do mail, to do actual physical mail, but that's use technology, collect all the emails so that we can be more proactive next time. Because not all businesses are members of chamber.
No, but however, the city noticed over sixteen thousand property owners. We noticed the entire city.
Okay, very good. So Vice Mayor Chow, you just have a half a minute left. Let me weigh in. I will be supportive of the motion on the table. I believe that it is legitimate to pass, given the contours of the notice that we've provided through this agenda. But I would like the city attorney to weigh in on that, given the three modifications that have been made from the items that were presented to the public. Because it is clear that alternatives could be considered, given the fact that attachment D is an alternative in itself. But how does our city attorney feel? But how does our, our city attorney feel with respect to what kind of footing we stand on?
Yes, it's, it's proper for the city to move forward. Um, councils often make modifications to proposals that are before them. And the staff report mentioned the exemptions were something they were trying to get direction on, so, um, it, yeah, it's fine to move forward.
Okay, so that would be my comment. Um, does anyone else, uh, feel, okay, so, uh, Councilmember Moore?
Since, right, since we've, uh, in, now included all residential homes, I would like staff to reiterate what changes, what, and what will trigger them, uh, that homeowners will have to do. So if I'm, uh, changing out my windows, am I going to have to make a change there? Um, and I also noticed, and I had a difficult time making a, uh, determination between what were the changes in your, uh, in the combined, uh, dark sky and bird safe ordinance versus the, uh, parsed out, uh, bird safe ordinance. So I, I personally found that difficult, because you included incorporated lighting in the bird safe, so, um,
Okay, can staff speak to that? Um, uh, with regard to what would trigger, uh, such as changing of windows in, um, in an R1 unit?
Uh, yes, that would, uh, trigger, um, having bird safe windows, which would be the standard, which could be standard muntens that go on the windows, which is the lines that go in the windows themselves.
All right, so whether, so perhaps if you had a modern design home, muntens would not be something that would, uh, that would not be, um, uh, appropriate design-wise. So for instance, I live in an Eichler. If I'm changing out my windows, I don't want muntens. It does not fit the architectural style. It doesn't fit the R1E, um, uh, recommendations. So what do I have to do there?
Um, we would have a, uh, handout for, uh, standard compliance options, which could be any number of bird safe, uh, treatments that, such as etching or, um, any other uh, things that could be applied to the glass to make it bird safe.
And this would be for, not just for my neighborhood, but for every single R1 home in, in the city will now need to either put in muntens or some kind of, uh, texture on, on the glass.
With the proposed amendment, yes.
Okay, um, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand up. Uh, you still, do you have a minute and a half?
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to make this comment, though. I would like to exclude, uh, window replacements on existing structures. Windows going from the old single pane aluminum frame are very energy inefficient. We want people to improve the energy efficiency of their house. We want them to move, uh, to more, uh, efficient windows, double pane windows, and then putting this type of constraint on, which they may not want to change the windows in the entire house. But now when they do go to change some of them, they're going to look different than the rest of the house. So I would like this to exclude existing structures and be for all new structures, where all the windows are new and they would match. And so I, I would really like to not be trying to split hairs with existing structures. Existing structures be exempt. Let people, uh, upgrade the energy efficiency of their windows without this burden. And for any new houses, okay, in residential areas, let's go ahead and apply it. Um, see what Councilman Chow would, uh.
Hey, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, would you, would you accept such a friendly amendment to, um, uh, Councilmember Willie's motion? Uh, so, so he's making.
I think, I think if people want to replace the window for energy efficiency, they could just add a little bit for bird safe. And I'm sure that as this become common, the cost will come down. It might, it might not make much difference in the future.
Could I interject just briefly and ask staff to confirm the application of the glazing standards to existing buildings? Because I think we need to look at the language specifically.
So only if the, um, the windows are being replaced, if there are new additions and remodels, which would be replacement of windows, or if there are new structures, that would be the application of the glazing requirements.
Because I see it's applied to complete or partial remodel of primary accessing or accessory building.
Which, if they replace the windows, would be considered that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, uh, okay, um, so.
I think also then we need to look at the, relook at the strikeout, um, suggestions that, uh, Vice Mayor Chow had up there as amendments to the origin, to the motion.
Um, so I, uh, I see Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up. Councilmember Moore?
Um, you know, I don't, not sure if I have any more time, but, uh, one of the things that we discussed and, and I, and I have to say, with the, the constraints that we have on our time, that we are allowed to speak here, I don't feel that this, I, issue, this item is being able to be fully vetted, um, so that, uh, all the council members, uh, actually understand what they are passing. And I think that that's a, a problem, because when it came to the planning commission, I think, you know, we had several hours of discussion and over two different, uh, periods. Um, so with regards to, uh, changing out the windows, it, it, some of, you know, putting bird safe in some windows on a house actually doesn't make sense. Um, for instance, a small bathroom window, which is not tinted, uh, it, it might actually never have a, uh, bird collision, uh, there. And you're also talking, uh, very short distances, very short flight distances for some of these single-family homes, which are very close together. So, um, you know, the potential for injury then becomes, uh, you know, less significant than if you had a lo, large structure with clear story windows exposed on a hillside, um, in, in that type of an area. And, uh, so I, I just, I really wish that there was more time for the council members to understand the, the whole, um, ordinance.
Um, so I, I think at this point, um, we, and, and thank you for mentioning the time. Um, I'm going ahead and adding a minute, uh, to, uh, council member's time. I'll, I'll note that not all of us have used all of the time or nearly all of it. Um, but it seems like the sticking point at this point has to do with the R1, um, windows. And, uh, I appreciate Councilmember Willie's, um, attempt to, uh, try to, try to, try to salvage the, um, support. Um, but it does sound like we're not at unanimity, certainly. Um, as long as the R1, um, homes are, are in there. Uh, but at the same time, um, there does seem to be a potential, uh, majority. So, so, so let me just take a, a straw poll here. Um, with regard to the motion that's on the table as put forth, um, by Councilmember Willie with modifications from Vice Mayor Chow, um, who would be in support of that? Um, and so, uh, let me, let me start with, uh, Councilmember Willie as the, as a person who brought the motion. Uh, having gone through this deliberative process, are you in support of your original motion or?
So I, I'm in support of everything except the replacement of windows in existing structures. We could revisit that at another point in time when we make additional changes. But for tonight, leave the residential window replacement out of this one. If it's a new residence, by all means, but leave it out of the other. And then I would support this and let's move forward.
Okay, to answer the question, it sounds like you would not support the motion on the table. With the modification of, um, exempting replacement windows for R1, uh, for, for R1, uh, residences.
Correct. I, I did not read that in the, uh, amendment, that it would be for window replacements.
Okay, um, Councilmember, well, all right, then this is two questions now. Um, so, so we have your, your answer. Council, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, with regard to the original motion and this modified motion, uh, would you support the original motion that's on the table? Which I, I assume you would, because that was essentially your motion.
Yeah.
And what about this modification that Councilmember Willie is, um, expressing here, where there is an exemption for replacement windows, uh, in, in R1 residences?
Um, okay, maybe here. Okay, I'll share the screen. Oh, this one, okay. So this is the link, this is the table where it specified that the section nineteen point one oh two three zero three zero B, that is where, uh, my edits will be in, and that applies to new or replacement exterior glass window and doors. So that's the question here. And, and these are my edits that's in that section. And, uh, I understand, um, so your concern is what if it were a smaller window? I also see that actually in, in here, if you look at four point C B, it's, uh, for commercial storefront up to a height of fifteen feet. So we do exempt commercial, the first floor commercial buildings up to a height of fifteen feet. What if for existing buildings, we exempt the first floor, but then the second floor, if they replace the windows? Um, they should use the.
Sounds good to me, yeah.
It's a compromise?
Okay, um, so now I have, um, before I move on to the other council members, is staff following this? Do you feel like you can reflect this, um, in, um, in what we're setting forth in front of the public tonight? Adequately for a first reading?
Let me copy the whole thing.
Uh, you want to share my screen? Just maybe, hopefully.
Yeah.
Here, what is being proposed?
So P, I'm sorry, did you say you wanted to share your screen?
Yes, just, just to understand and hopefully to make sure that I'm capturing what is being, um, proposed. A clarifying question is that all residential development or just window replacements, uh, in R1 zoning districts?
I think that's correct, yes. Up to a height of fifteen feet would be exempted.
Um, but all over the city or only outside of the bird sensitive areas? We want it to be sensitive to the bird sensitive areas, which is where birds generally, uh, are more, um, you know.
I think we don't want to separate. We, we have birds, I think, everywhere. Actually, in my house, the first strike we had was on first floor windows.
Let's try that, let's try, let's try that for Vice, with Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, so window replacements in R1 zoning districts up to a height of fifteen feet would be exempt everywhere. Just, just so we're clear.
Yes, yes. So Councilmember Willie agrees with that. Vice Mayor Chow agrees with that. Um, Councilmember Wei, is that agreeable to you?
Okay, so I, I actually approved the original one, because it just makes it much easier and I don't understand the, um, I mean, maybe the replacement for existing windows is too expensive or is it, was the consideration? And I am concerned if we, um, examine the, uh, up to the bird sensitive areas, if they're high up in the mountains, even on the first floor, I think the window should be, uh, bird safe. So now we're making things very complicated. So I am very supportive of the first, um, motion that John did and a, um, was the friendly amendment from Chow. It, it just gets too complicated.
Okay, 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 that's fair. Let, let me, let me go around. Uh, Councilmember Moore, um, what are your thoughts on the original motion and the modification?
Okay, well, if, if you're considering an Eichler home and you're just mentioning windows, uh, Eichler homes will also have a significant number of, uh, sliding glass doors, uh, which are windows. And, uh, uh, you can have French doors with the, um, full glass as well. Uh, I am, uh, I'm kind of in alignment with, uh, Councilmember Wei. I think, uh, going back to the original, um, alternate, uh, parsed out bird safe ordinance, uh, that the one line I would have struck from that, uh, because we, we just don't have support for it, is the, uh, 100% affordable housing, uh, development, um, exemption.
I don't, I don't want you to misrepresent Councilmember Wei's position. She was okay with the original motion brought by Vice Mayor Chow.
Oh, okay. Well, then I would, personally, I would, uh, suggest an alternative to, um, Councilmember Willie's, uh, to add to the, a simple friendly amendment to eliminate 4D, the 100% affordable housing developments. Um, that I could go along with, but still, uh, philosophically, I, I have not been able to, um, get on board with the concept that, uh, we've separated out the dark skies from this. And I would still personally rather see the dark skies and bird safe go together and have all.
Let me look this up there. Um, so backing up, you're not supportive of either the motion that was originally brought by Councilmember Willie, which contained those three, uh, changes by Councilmember Chow? Or the exemption, or, or the modification that was just made, which exempts up to fifteen feet on R1 homes? Um, although I'm a little bit confused with regard to your example of Eichlers and sliding glass windows, because those would be exempt, because that would be on the first floor and up to fifteen feet, under this current amendment. So i- is it that you would want those to be, uh, part of the bird safe ordinance? Or you are concerned that, uh, they would, uh, have to be subjected to it? Because if it's the second one, uh, actually, under the current amendment that we were looking at just a moment ago, um, those would be fine to replace without having to adhere to these current requirements. Okay?
Oh, okay, so these are sliding glass doors. And well, I, I have to say, you're just making it very complicated unnecessarily. Um, I would have preferred the R1 districts exempted, just the.
I, I'm simply trying to be consistent with what you're stating as your concern. Um, but, but then you went forward with 100% affordable exemption, which apparently you do not want to have. Is that correct? You, you.
We don't, we don't have support for the 100% affordable, uh, housing developments. I've not heard, uh, that at all. So no one seems to want to exempt that, even though the, the idea was to reduce cost. Uh, so that's an issue. Uh, and I would need.
Well, well, I'm sorry, what is your position on that? Is that something where you would want that stricken out as an exemption at this point? Or do you want that included?
I would, because I would go along with the majority and, and remove it as an exemption.
Let's see. Okay, um, so, so you're okay with that aspect of it? The R1 aspect, uh, I think essentially you just don't want it to, to, to be messed with, so to speak. Um, and, and so just leave it as it is in the staff recommendation. And then someone remind me with the, the first, um, uh, modification that, that Vice Mayor Chow wanted. There were three modifications.
Okay, um, let me.
Share my screen on the document that I had.
Do you have that or do you want me to share?
It's striking the language about all bird species.
Oh, right, the all bird species.
I can share mine if you want.
Uh, yes.
Have that, okay.
Um, so, so, so Councilmember Moore, are you okay with striking that language regarding all bird species? That was added since the last, um, last time this was before us?
Correct, yes.
You're okay with that? Okay, so we're actually, okay, two thirds of the way there, um, with, with Councilmember Moore. Um, I think we do have, uh, a sufficient amount of votes, uh, to, uh, to, to, to pass the first reading. I just don't know whether we, um, are well advised to go forward, uh, without achieving a unanimity when we're so close to it. Um, so I wonder whether it might not make sense to, uh, ask that we make some modifications, uh, go back and think about it, um, and, and, you know, kind of, um, translate what's been discussed here into, uh, another version. I, I'm not wanting to delay this, but I think we're very close. Uh, but I would like to, in respect of the public's, uh, and, and our staff's time and, and noticing, as well as having the benefit of being able to go back, uh, and consolidate everything that we've, uh, talked about tonight, um, to, to bring this back. Um, i- is, is that something that would be palatable to people? I mean, I think we've had a very productive discussion. I, I do think it's close. However, um, I, I think we can. I, I do think it's close. However, um, I, I, I think we could use the benefit of time to get to the point where we can, uh, reach a unanimous consensus here. Um, I, I see Vice Mayor Chow has her hand raised. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, followed by, uh, Councilmember.
I would prefer that we vote on my, uh, friend, my amendment today. And then maybe next time, I think maybe Apple would even come up with some, uh, suggestions. And maybe we can consider exempt the smaller windows, but that will need more thought. And, uh, that we can law, lawmaking is sometimes a iterative process.
Sure, absolutely.
Has something, uh, simpler this time. And then if something really is not prac- prac- practical, we can always come back and make that, uh, better.
But I, I just think that it might be procedurally more efficient, um, a- as in faster to, uh, put this over to January nineteenth, as opposed to going through a first reading of an ordinance. Uh, whereas if we wanted to undo that first reading, we would then have noticed the second reading for January nineteenth. Uh, and then we would have to conduct the first reading at a subsequent meeting after that, if we wanted to modify what we're, um, uh, enacting, not enacting, but passing as a first reading tonight.
A good question. Can we, uh, motive, I think we can make a minor modification in second reading, right?
I, I don't know if that's, yeah, uh, Madam City Attorney.
It's, it's simply, um, correcting typographical errors, um, in between first and second reading. So minor modifications would need to be a new first reading.
Okay.
Right, minor substantive modifications.
Yes, right.
Um, Councilmember Wei.
Yes, I was just gonna make the same, um, proposal as, um, Liang, just, you know, we have a motion and we have a second and let's pick a vote it. And I agree with you, we're very close. And, um, I think it's good to make it simpler, even with, um, you know, um, I think Kitty's concerned about, you know, the, the, the old. We're trying to make this a citywide thing. This is for environmental issues. This is good for the birds, good for the environment. So I think simpler is good and I would, uh, support the, our, um, motion on the table.
All right, um, okay, so, uh, it, it does sound like, a- and I am okay with the motion on the table as well. I would just prefer that we have closer to a unanimous consensus. But I, I think we all understand our respective positions. Uh, the motion on the table, uh, at this time, it, um, I, I believe that the motion on the table at this time, uh, following all of the friendly amendments was Vice Mayor Chow's original motion, um, then modified, uh, which, which was actually brought by Councilmember Willie, then modified for the fifteen feet, uh, in residential areas, R, R one, uh, residences, uh, to be exempt uh, up to that fifteen feet height. Um, so, but, but I.
I withdraw, I'm, I don't support that now if I, did I second it? I think I'm not supporting that right now. So I'm supporting my original, um, proposal.
Okay, so it sounds like you're withdrawing your seconding of that modification. Uh, and so, so Councilmember Willie, we have that original motion that was brought by you. Um, that does have Councilmember Chow's, uh, three language modifications, uh, in them, uh, as well as the seconding of, um, a, a, a Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, so I, I think, uh, let's move forward with it. Uh, I think I'm also hearing that, uh, Councilman Moore is not as concerned. So, uh, let's move forward with the, uh, uh, Vice Mayor Chow's, um, modifications.
So just to clarify, these are the three original ones I proposed.
Yes, thank you for putting that up on the screen, uh, and clarifying that. So that is the motion on the table. Um, I would ask that, uh, having had a, a very full discussion on this, uh, and it seems like the will of the majority to, uh, proceed with a first reading vote. Uh, Madam City Clerk, if you would conduct that first reading, um, with the, uh, w- w- with, with the modifications that were on the screen a moment ago, uh, and that have been discussed as part of the existing motion.
Okay, and I went ahead and assigned an ordinance number to the alternative ordinance since one was not assigned to it in, prior to the agenda. Uh, so this is the first reading of ordinance number two zero dash two two one nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending city code to add chapter nineteen point one zero two, bird safe development standards and to amend chapter nineteen point zero eight definitions to implement bird safe regulations and as modified by Vice Mayor Chow, uh, and, um, I would request that you email those, those, um, your slide modifications to me as well, unless you want to put them up right now on the screen.
Oh, I can do that. I can send you a screenshot also.
Okay, excellent. So, um, Councilmember Willie, your motion has been, uh, read in, in terms of the first reading. Uh, an ordinance number has been attached to it of two zero dash two two one nine. And Vice Mayor Chow seconds this with, uh, the specific modifications that uh, were adopted by Councilmember Willie in his motion and seconded by Vice Mayor Chow up on our screen right now. Uh, Madam City Clerk, if you would, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with more voting now.
Okay, so thank you very much. Our, uh, next agenda item is item number twelve, which is the adoption of a housing program to incentivize development of affordable housing by allowing for density bonuses up to forty percent and initiating a zoning code amendment to include the program in the city's density bonus ordinance. If we could, please have the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ben Fu, Director of Community Government. Uh, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about that. Oh, my goes off a little bit. Uh, we have, uh, with us, uh, Barbara Kautz, the partner from, uh, Go, Go Farber Litman, uh, also consulting attorney from the City Attorney's Office, be assisting us on this item and doing the presentation, myself, as well as Pugh, who goes to play manager present as well. With that, I will hand it off to Barb. Barb, the floor is yours.
No, I believe Pugh is going to do the, uh, staff report.
I apologize, yes, sorry. And Barb will be supporting Pugh, apologize.
Right.
Let me begin by sharing my screen. Thank you, Ben. Um, good evening, Council. Um, we're here to, uh, consider adoption of a housing program to incentivize affordable housing. Um, as you may recall, Affordable Housing Strategies is a city work program item for fiscal year nineteen, uh, nineteen, uh, for the fiscal year twenty 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 one. Um, this includes updates to the city's density bonus ordinance. And, uh, among that, we kind of split it into two pieces, uh, which is adoption of the proposed housing program that is being proposed tonight. And there are other amendments also that are uh, going to be considered to the, uh, city's density bonus ordinance, uh, later in spring twenty twenty one. As a refresher on density bonus, uh, density bonus law currently allows a maximum density bonus of thirty five percent. Uh, there are also, uh, requirements under density bonus law, uh, which allow density bonuses of up to, I believe, eighty percent for a hundred percent affordable projects. Um, but however, starting January twenty, uh, January first, twenty twenty one, uh, the maximum density bonus allowed under state law will increase to fifty percent. Uh, staff in, uh, is proposing, uh, certain changes to the housing program to incentivize affordable housing development. Um, essentially currently very low income, uh, for projects that include very low income units. Uh, at, they top out at eleven percent or more, uh, of affordable units. They get a maximum, um, density bonus of thirty five percent. And the proposed change to that is, uh, that, uh, developments that propose thirteen percent or more affordable units in the very low income category would max out at forty percent. Um, so for each one percent increase over the five percent, um, target units, the density bonus would increase uh, by tw- two point five percent, up to a maximum of forty percent. It's a sliding scale. Um, for, uh, projects that provide, uh, low income units, uh, up to twenty percent currently tap out at, um, thirty five percent of density bonus. And the proposed change is that, uh, for projects that include twenty three percent or more low income housing units would max out at a forty percent density bonus. Um, finally, for moderate income, uh, developments where, um, currently they max out at, uh, thirty five percent density bonus uh, for forty percent or more affordable units. Um, they would, uh, now have to provide forty five percent, um, affordable units at the moderate income level, um, to get a density bonus of up to forty percent. And no changes are being proposed to the senior citizen, um, density bonuses. I just wanted to, uh, kind of address how state law and our local standards, should the council adopt this local program, um, uh, be impacted. Uh, essentially, uh, this table compares a list of things that are, uh, coming under state law, uh, which are going to go into effect on January first, twenty twenty one. So on the far left, you have density bonuses. Um, essentially, uh, state law would allow a maximum of fifty five, uh, percent, uh, while the local program would allow a max of forty percent. Uh, for incentives and concessions, um, state law has reduced the threshold at which you receive two or more, uh, two concessions or three concessions. Um, but if the council were to adopt a housing program, um, tonight, there would be no changes, uh, to the number of incentives or concessions that the city would, uh, have to provide to developments. Um, they would still have to provide, um, twenty percent low income units or thirty percent low income units, depending on what they want to propose in order to get either two or three incentives or concessions. Finally, there are some additional changes to state law that will occur on January first, twenty twenty one. There are some parking reductions, um, uh, into for, uh, two or three bedroom units. And, uh, there is a de- a definition of a distance to a major transit stop that is now incorporated into state law. Um, and adoption of the local housing program has no effect on either the parking standards or that definition of a, uh, transit stop. So there are, um, several reasons why, um, it is believed that, uh, the city's local program, uh, might be, uh, uh, better um, to incentivize affordable housing. Um, state law actually provided, provides fairly large increases in market rate units, um, for fairly small increases in the number of affordable units that would be provided. Um, and therefore, um, however, Cupertino is on track to meet its Vena for above mob units in this current cycle, and, um, there is a need for affordable units, which is why this new program is proposed. Um, with regard to the use of density bonuses, um, the state law, uh, that, um, brings about these changes based on the San Diego, uh, program where, um, where they increased the local density bonus to fifty percent. And after that local program, they saw significant increases in the use of the density bonus program. They generated in San Diego eight hundred market rate, uh, units and a hundred and thirty affordable units. However, in Cupertino, all but one developer has used the maximum available density bonuses since twenty fifteen. And we have, uh, the city has approved fifteen hundred and ninety market rate and twelve hundred and sixty seven affordable units, um, under the city's, uh, existing programs. Um, furthermore, there was an analysis that was prepared by the Turner Center. And, um, the, uh, the analysis indicates that the proposed changes to state law are slightly less fiscally attractive than the existing law. And, um, however, uh, we feel that, uh, the Cupertino local program may be slightly more attractive than the state law because, um, our, the developers locally have used our programs, um, quite significantly already. Um, there's also, um, a consideration that in the AB seventeen sixty three, um, uh, changes that have been in, uh, effect, uh, since, uh, I believe, January first of this year, where a hundred percent, uh, market rate development, uh, could get up to eighty percent density bonus. Those would, um, be undermined because allowing such a large density bonus for market rate projects would take away the competitive edge that, um, affordable housing developers might have because of the large density bonus that they will receive. Um, however, adopting a local program may maintain some of that competitive edge for affordable housing developers here in Cupertino. And with that, staff concludes its presentation and recommends that the council adopt a draft resolution, um, by finding the actions exempt from CEQA, um, adopting a new housing program and initiating a density bonus ordinance or, uh, amendment to reflect the new program that council adopts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pugh. Uh, questions from council? And please raise your hand if you have any. Uh, if there are none, then I will go directly to comments. So Councilmember Moore, uh, followed by Councilmember Willie.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Uh, I, my question, I, I think is more for, um, Attorney Barbara Kautz. Uh, and I just looking at our, um, chapter nineteen point five six, uh, density bonus ordinance that we have. And I noticed that in the staff presentation, uh, there was some discussion about the affordable housing that has, uh, been approved. And, uh, that, those units, um, in particular, the ones at the Valco project, uh, were very small. Uh, they were, um, three hundred and eighty, no, no, yeah, three hundred and eighty eight square feet, I believe, and five hundred and twenty six square feet for the studio and one bedroom, uh, units. And when I look at our density bonus ordinance, um, it's stating that, uh, the affordable units, uh, shall be provided as follows. They shall be dispersed throughout the project and they shall be identical with the design of any market rate rental units in the project. Um, with the exception that a reduction of interior amenities for affordable units will be permitted upon prior approval by the city council as necessary to retain project affordability. And so I guess my question is whether or not those, uh, requirements from our density bonus, um, from our, yes, in our, uh, density bonus ordinance, if those can be, um, taken as concessions? Um, or if those have to, um, be enforced?
Well, essentially, anything can be requested as a concession. I wasn't, uh, involved with the Valco projects, but the Valco project approval specifically. But my understanding is that's exactly what happened. Um, and maybe the staff can confirm is that the Valco, uh, developer asked to have the usual standards waived as a concession to reduce the cost of the affordable units.
Okay, okay. So I guess my next question is, uh, you know, what's the point of even having this requirement like dispersal and identical, um, requirement, uh, if it can just be taken as a concession? And then it looks like AB uh, two, three, what is it, two, three, four, five is, is simply allowing even more, uh, concessions to be taken. Uh, so at that point, I, I guess what I'm driving at is that it looks like we're allowing a developer to not provide for uh, large families who would be qualifying for affordable housing.
So roughly fifteen seconds left on your questions.
Okay, so anyway, that, that would be it is, uh, we have these items in our ordinance and it looks like they can all be taken as concessions without, uh, without.
They are, and that kind of a concession which involves saving money. So concessions involve saving money, um, generally. Uh, and those, they're limited, even with a hundred percent affordable project, they can only get four, four concessions. Um, you know, so generally the, the developers are limited in the number of concessions they can get. Um, unfortunately, they can also request waivers, I think, as the council is well aware and can get an unlimited number of waivers from, from development standards. Um, I think it's a problem with the density bonus statutes. I think generally there's not that much opposition to some of the increases in density, but frankly, the developers can really request, um, to have almost any standard waived.
Okay, uh, great. We're about a minute over on your time, um, on the.
Sorry, I, well, that was probably.
No, it's fine. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll take that from deliberative time. Um, but the next hand raised is Councilmember Willie.
So I, I just want to be sure that we all kind of understand. Maybe I'm correct and maybe I'm not. So in the city right now, you know, I'm looking for confirmation, in the city right now, we have up to thirty percent, uh, thirty units per acre on some sites. Um, but I don't think I've seen any that allow as a city, uh, requirement above the thirty. Can staff confirm that?
Um, there are sites that have densities that range. There are sites that have densities that range up to eighty-five dwelling units per acre, but those are one-offs. In general, most of part of the city is twenty-five dwelling units to the acre. And the density bonus ordinance does allow densities to go above that base density.
Right, but what did you say we have up to? In general, like, let's say, United Furniture, is that thirty units per acre?
That is twenty-five dwelling units to the acre.
Okay, so now, when we start talking about, you know, these state laws and how we're trying to ensure, you know, what fits for our community. So let's, I already ran these with thirty units per acre. With a thirty-five percent state density bonus, that would mean the developer would be entitled to forty-point-five. If he, if we were to approve it going up to forty percent, he could then go up to forty-two units. If he were to take the state one, and we didn't have our ordinance that we're considering tonight, he'd go up fifty percent to forty-five. So is that my interpretation? Is it correct? That's what we're kind of talking about?
That sounds correct.
Now, just so that everybody realizes, if you take something like the Hamptons, the city council approved, I think, a density of seventy-five units per acre at the Hamptons?
Sounds about right.
And so with that, a developer can come in and make a proposal at any time and say, you know what? This is going to be wonderful for your community. This is going to be a higher density, but it's going to be right on the border with Apple and will cater a lot to this workforce at Apple. So they can always come and ask for that. But what we have to do is realize the rest of our community, you know, it could be in jeopardy if we don't put in place rules to kind of contain what they would, developers would be trying to do. So feel free to interrupt and correct me on any of this. That's why I feel what we're doing tonight is very important. When I hear that there, under that AB seventeen sixty-three, they could get eighty percent of a increase, and is that what I was reading?
Sounds right.
So now, I do have another important point to alert the community and stuff. If we had something like United Furniture, and let's say that it's zoned for thirty units per acre, and it has retail, let's say, seventy thousand square feet of retail, and he then decides to say, I'm going to keep seventy thousand square feet of retail, and I'm going to put the thirty units per acre of housing, and I'm going to claim the state density bonus law, all on top of that, saturating that site. That's where I'm very concerned that when we talk about housing in these housing numbers, and we are not understanding that if there's something else on the site or some other mechanism, the developer can truly do much more than we would have realized. And that's what happened at Valco, when the developer took, you know, one point eight to two million square feet of office, and he took the maximum amount of housing with the maximum amount of state density bonus, and we're left with ten-story buildings all around that site.
Okay, so you're about a minute forty over, you're three minutes.
Yeah, and so I just want to be sure that if I'm incorrect, you know, let staff correct me. But if I am correct, that the community realize why this is such an important issue.
Okay, great. Now, so that's a couple of minutes. Just a reminder, prior to public commentary, we're trying to limit this more to questions. You're free to deliberate. I'm just going to take it away from the deliberative time, which I think is probably justified, given that a lot of this is, in fact, deliberation. So let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow at this point. Any questions of staff regarding the presentation? And you'll need to unmute yourself if you're intending to speak, Vice Mayor Chow. You're not, you're muted, Vice Mayor Chow. You need to unmute yourself.
So this is the table from the staff report that, under the new state law, AB two-three four-five, and after it will be effective January first. So right now, they get two incentives with twenty lower-income house, twenty percent low-income household and thirty-five percent density bonus and thirty percent. But January first, they will get, they will qualify for the same incentives with more density bonus from thirty-five is increased to fifty percent. And with, they only need less number of affordable housing. Is that right?
The.
But the state law actually requires less affordable housing and granting them more density bonus for market radio needs?
No, they have, if the state law applied to Cupertino, they would need, they would need to provide more affordable housing to reach the fifty percent bonus. But they could provide less affordable housing, as this table shows, to get the two incentives or three, or three incentives. However, if the city adopts its own housing program as proposed by the staff, then this chart on incentives and concessions will not apply. The new, the new standards will not apply, and the old standards will apply, what's labeled as existing, plus the maximum density would be limited to forty percent. I should, I clarify one thing and state that the council will not be adopting an ordinance or introducing an ordinance tonight, just initiating an ordinance amendment to be considered by the Planning Commission.
We will determine the detail later. So today, initiating a potential ordinance. And because, since we initiated a housing program, we could still consider the existing percentage to qualify for incentives.
Right, you'll take, the staff recommendation is to take two actions tonight. One is to adopt a housing program with the percentages that were shown by Pew in the staff report. And secondly, to initiate an ordinance amendment and refer this to the Planning Commission for consideration to incorporate into the density bonus ordinance.
Yeah, so this is another table from the staff report.
Right.
So the, on the right is what we are proposing.
Right.
By the way, this is not final, it's just an idea. So if we could still change it before we have final adoption.
Well, the, well, the recommendation is that you adopt this as a housing program tonight, and then refer it to the Planning Commission for consideration. The Planning Commission then, for consideration, for inclusion in the actual density bonus ordinance. The Planning Commission might recommend something different, or when it comes back to you, you might, you know, want to do something different. But the recommendation is to, I guess, for the time being, to adopt this as a housing incentive program. The statute says that you can adopt a housing incentive program or an ordinance or both as an alternative to what's in the state law. And so we're suggesting that you adopt the housing, this as a housing incentive program tonight, but then refer it to the Planning Commission to consider incorporating it into the ordinance. And they may come back with something different, whereas I said, when it comes back to you, you may want to modify this somewhat.
They can come back with different numbers. So, for example, we could even come back with, to consider both forty percent and fifty percent with different requirement for low-income housing, right? It's not like we are, we have to consider only forty. We could also consider forty, fifty, or sixty, right?
Yes.
And the question, okay, for senior housing, how come we don't consider senior housing for extra density bonus?
I'm sorry.
For senior housing, no change. Why don't we permit the extra density bonus for senior housing, which we need, right, in this community? Is there some state law prohibiting that?
No, the city could, the city could elect to add to the program a greater density bonus for senior housing. The senior housing bonus is for senior housing that's entirely market rate. So I think that's why there wasn't a recommendation, because it doesn't necessarily need to have any affordable housing at all, except what the city would require. The truth is, under the city's, let's see, the city requires fifteen percent lower income. So the project would, a senior project that met the city's BMR requirements would actually qualify for a higher, for more than a twenty percent bonus anyway. I think it would be a twenty-seven and a half percent bonus if I am doing the math correct.
So Councilmember Chow, I want you to know.
So when the Planning Commission comes back, we can also require a certain unit size, right? So that could be considered later.
Yes, you can consider a whole variety of things.
Okay, great. So again, you're about three minutes over, so that'll cut into deliberative. Councilmember Wei, do you have questions of staff regarding the presentation material?
I just want to confirm, this is a resolution, it's not an ordinance, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, got it. That's what I need to know now. I would, I would save my time for deliberation.
Okay, very good. I don't have questions, and so we'll move on to public comments at this point. Our first speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Victoria Fierce, followed by Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Jennifer. Jennifer, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor Darcy, this is extremely emotional. Okay, all respect to the staff and our consultants. I have great respect for our city staff and our consultants. This, unfortunately, the housing bills is going to be a hard-fought battle. This is as bad as the R-1 ever was, it's as bad as Valco ever did, and it will be a fight to the bitter end. This bill, AB two-three forty-five, is one of the most insidious, insidious of the big nine housing bills that were backed by Senator Scott Weiner and Senator Tony Atkins in twenty twenty. The bill was backed by big-money interests from San Diego and from big-money interests from outside of California. We know who these people are. The intent of the bill is highly questionable, and the bill's authors, Assemblymember Lorena Gonzalez from San Diego and Assemblymember David Chu from San Francisco, have written other housing bills of questionable content and origins and questionable money backing. The Turner Institute is a mouthpiece for the high-density housing set, and other groups such as the Embarcadero Institute should be consulted. The bill is highly controversial and poorly understood for anyone to anticipate adopting now or if ever, especially after the governor just signed it two months ago. These housing bills have been very poorly written in the past with vague wording and potential side effects. AB two-three forty-five is such a vehicle for big-money interests and should be studied carefully before being taken up as anything the city would want to deal with. As a side note, Senator Weiner has already introduced many of the big housing bills. He authored some with Assemblymember Chu from the past, from last year, back into the new California session for twenty twenty-one. All they did was put a new bill number on it. This shows clearly the effect of big-money interests on the big machinery of big-housing density bills production. AB two-three forty-five is the product of the assembly line of big-housing bills from big money. How is this type of bill in any way democratic? Why do the bill's authors think they are passing democratic bills at all? Since when is democracy supposed to be directed to order by big-money interests and big money from outside of the state? Whose democracy is that? No, let's study AB two-three forty-five and see what issues it has and what baggage it brings to the city. I think the public is seeing a lot clearer what these bills are coming from and whose interests they put first. Perhaps it would be better to postpone this hot mess of a bill to next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Victoria Fierce, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Kelsey Baines. Welcome, Victoria.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hi, my name is Victoria Fierce, and I'm with the California Renters Legal Advocacy and Education Fund. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit here in California. We've met many times, I'm sure. And we sue suburbs who go and violate state law. And ninety-nine percent of the time, when I show up at a city council meeting, it's to Warren, a city council, they're about to violate state law. Tonight is no different. It's plainly obvious to me that what you're trying to do by passing this as a resolution is to get around the new state law and the state density bonus. And I'm here to say that that's not going to work, because even though state law does say you're allowed to adopt an ordinance or housing program, it's very, very hard-stretch to try and sell this table that you've got in this resolution as being a full and complete housing program. For one, your zoning ordinance already defines what your inclusionary rates are and your concessions and all that. And you're trying to basically amend that by passing a resolution, which you just, you just can't do. It doesn't, that's not how the law works. You have to pass an ordinance. But unfortunately, you don't have time to pass an ordinance. There's only so many meetings left in the year, and it sounds like the state law is going to end up applying to you, unfortunately, and you're going to be saddled with having more housing, God forbid. Cupertino, you can't change this, you can't implement a housing program in a resolution, you can't overrule and amend your, your inclusionary zoning program by just saying it. You have to pass an ordinance, you have to pass a law. This isn't even a question about whether or not it applies to you, because it absolutely does. And city after city is falling to state law. They keep trying to fight us in court. Look at Los Altos, ask how well that went for them. It's not great. So I'd be happy if Cupertino didn't, you know, try and waste everybody's time by trying to pass an unlawful ordinance or an unlawful resolution. That'd be really great. I had to sit through an hour of that discussion about the bird windows, and I tell you, you know, I think there's bigger problems to solve, like the homelessness in your town and the fact that you haven't built a whole lot of affordable housing. I was part of the RENA Commission, and we gave you the numbers that you're going to have to meet. And if you're going to try and restrict the development within Cupertino, you're going to have to take a long look at yourself and ask, how are you going to meet these new RENA numbers? Because as you may well know, there's consequences now. You don't get to choose anymore between not building housing and building housing. You get to choose between building housing and consequences. And I am one of the consequences. So please don't pass this, don't even try, stop wasting everybody's time. Thank you, have a good night. You can find more information about Carla at carlaef.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham, followed by Kelsey Baines, followed by a caller with phone number ending nine-two-oh-five. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Connie Cunningham, and I've lived here thirty-three years. I'm on the Housing Commission, but I speak tonight for myself only. I have two points to discuss. The first is substance, and then the second is process. Under substance, I say, this resolution does not achieve a better way to incentivize development of affordable housing, even though that is the stated objective on page one of the staff report. The summary of the Turner analysis is that AB two-thirty-five, two-three-four-five represents, quote, "a step in the right direction," unquote, "for legislation that balances affordability with financial feasibility." However, quote, "further reform of the state's density bonus law is still necessary to significantly increase its utilization across the state," end quote. The third whereas of our city's proposed resolution states that AB two-three-four-five increases the density bonus for a minimal four percentage increase in affordable units. However, the change that's offered by the council increases the density bonus less than the new law and for a smaller, minimal two percentage increase in affordable units. By changing the Cupertino density, density bonus to forty percent, which is downward from the fifty percent allowed under AB twenty-three forty-five, the city does not increase the likelihood of developers using the density bonus units in the future. It does not. It does not improve the balance of affordability with financial feasibility that is found in AB two-three-four-five. With new Rena goals for additional housing above six thousand units, it really is critical for the city to expand its tools available to meet those goals. I urge the council not to adopt this, not to adopt this resolution, and instead to work with AB two-three-four-five and other tools to build housing for all incomes and all abilities in Cupertino. And the second thing that I was going to talk about tonight is the process issue. On page one, the staff report states that the city council's FY twenty-twenty-twenty-one City Work Program includes an agenda item related to affordable housing strategies. I want to mention that um, this particular item would normally come through the Housing Commission. We see the, I mean, Housing Commission sees the Housing Strategies Work Item products before it moves to the council. So although tonight the report skipped the Housing Commission, I recommend that the next thing that you're doing, go through the Housing Commission first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connie. Our next speaker is Kelsey Baines, followed by a caller with phone number ending nine-two-oh-five. Welcome, Kelsey.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelsey Baines. I'm with Peninsula for Everyone. We are a pro-housing advocacy group advocating for more homes at all income levels, better transportation options, and tenant protections. Um, and I've been listening to this meeting for a while and do appreciate the, the concern that I heard expressed earlier in the meeting about the unhoused residents uh, in the region and wanting to be part of that solution. And one thing that I think is really important to recognize is that homelessness is just a state of being unhoused. So if you care about homelessness, it's really important that you need to care about housing, and you need to care about housing across the entire income spectrum. Because you can think about housing as being an ecosystem, and if we're not creating housing for everyone in the ecosystem, it's going to have a ripple down effect. And the people who are going to get hit the hardest are the people at the lowest end of the income spectrum who are going to get pushed into homelessness. So I want to associate myself with the previous two comments, urging you against uh, doing this resolution tonight. In addition to being kind of hasty and poorly researched, it really comes off as just trying to skirt state housing regulations that are aimed at improving the supply of affordable housing and housing at all incomes. So um, I would urge Cupertino, rather than having this kind of reactive stance, uh, where you just keep resisting, resisting, resisting the state, to try to be a part of the solution, uh, and to accept the responsibility of creating housing opportunities within your city to serve the population of the people who work there and serve your community. So I think I'll, I will leave it there. Um, I hope you did read the, the letter from YIMBY Law, and I hope you heed the warnings um, from Victoria Fierce from, from Carla, because I do think you uh, very well could be putting Cupertino in additional legal jeopardy, which I don't think will be, will be helpful to your city as you move forward in your, your housing element process, which will undoubtedly be, be a challenge, because the numbers are significantly higher. So I think I will, I'll stop talking. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Kelsey. Our next speaker is a phone number ending nine-two-oh-five. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Once again, this is Joe Spalding. Can you all imagine how easy, how much you hear your rear goals would be to reach if you uh, just, oh goodness, had a dead shopping mall to build them all that housing on top of? I uh, actually really liked what Victoria Fierce had to say here, uh, and she's right. She does, she does show up and uh, tell suburbs when they're about to get sued. I know you have um, interesting advice coming from folks like you're, you're our planning commission chair there, Arlong, saying that, you know, twenty-four million dollars in fines over SP thirty-five would have been a small price to pay. I, I, I think that's different viewpoint if uh, you're somebody that's paying the bulk of the taxes and you're not, you know, locked in with Prop thirteen there. I do think it's interesting to see council members who talk about uh, you know, talk about Valco here, um, you know, being the same people that recused themselves from speaking on the issue the entire time it was up in front of the planning commission for whatever reason. But I suppose there just seems to be a different standard here, which again, uh, it would be nice if there's some sort of code of ethics there that everyone had to adhere to. It would reflect better. Anyway, um, I'm not going to sue anyone. I'm not a lawyer. I, I do, uh, you know, sometimes make videos and they help unelect city council members in places like Ann Arbor or Cupertino, uh, when they don't, um, you know, make enough housing. Kind of personal for me. Um, I, I've been, you know, displaced a few different times because of the cost of living, and I, I just happen to have the ability to help uh, influence folks understand what's going on in a very, very acute way on Election Day. And I, I'm more than happy to do that here if you all decide to go forward with this resolution. This is actually a slap in the face to actual housing activists who do put together housing plans and put in the real work to make sure people get off the street and into homes, to put a couple of charts up here and pretend that's uh, going to be good enough uh, housing policy under state law. It's, it's a shocking insult. And uh, you know, frankly, if you do go forward with that, you deserve the, the legal repercussions of that, because it's a, it's a, you know, pretty morally damning. Um, and uh, I know you all are comfortable trying to skirt housing while I'm sleeping at night. Um, I've seen it for years. But uh, you know, things are changing. Folks know that this is segregationist in nature. We know that your zoning laws are perpetuating um, for segregation. We know uh, where the, the municipalities that actually build housing are. And we know what the resistance to these state laws are at the legislative level. So, you know, we can talk about the Embarcadero Institute or whatever made-up thing tanks you want. I come from Michigan. All of my made-up thing tanks come from the DeBloss family. Uh, and uh, you know, I'm used to punching back against them.
Your three minutes. Uh, that, your, your time is up. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a local housing advocate. Uh, I'm disappointed, though not surprised, to see Cupertino trying to launch an end run around, well, yet another end run around state law, while attempting to shroud it in a veneer of equity and support for affordable housing. Not only would the resolution before you not produce more affordable housing than the state law would, but rather, it would have no effect whatsoever. As others have already explained, resolutions cannot override zoning ordinances per both the California Supreme Court and, in fact, Cupertino's own municipal code. If you'd wanted to make this change in actuality, you would have had to go through a substantive process. Instead, we have theater. If Cupertino really wanted to increase the production of affordable housing, there are myriad things you could do. Eliminate parking minimums, streamline, streamline processes, create an affordable housing zoning overlay with increased heights and densities, et cetera. But you haven't, because you don't. So again, pass this resolution or don't, it doesn't really matter, as it won't have any actual weight behind it. It will instead be seen correctly as a nakedly transparent attempt at making it harder to build affordable housing while pretending to do the opposite, which housing advocates such as myself can then present as further evidence to state legislators that further, that further housing laws are needed to correct the actions of cities like Cupertino. Thank you for your time tonight.
Great, thank you very much. That is our last caller. I will bring it back to council with regard to opening it up for discussion. I would like to request that we uh, bring forward a motion. Uh, is there a motion that anyone would like to bring forth at this point? Uh, and as I had stated, uh, the default for the purposes of opening up for discussion would be the staff recommendation. And so.
Okay, I will move for the staff recommendation, uh, which is, um, what is that?
Uh, I'll, I'll read it. On, on the agenda is to adopt resolution number twenty dash one forty-one, which is attachment A, adopting a housing program to incentivize development of affordable housing by allowing for density bonuses up to forty percent and initiating a zoning code amendment to include the, the program and the city's density bonus ordinance. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Chow uh, moves the staff recommendation and Councilmember Willie seconds. Who would like to go first with regard to uh, discussion on the motion on the table? Okay, well, if, if no one, um, then uh, I will, I will go. Oh, I do see uh, Councilmember Wei has her hand up. So uh, Councilmember Wei, please proceed.
Okay, so um, I would like to clarify that first I know this is a resolution, not an ordinance, and about the um, comments from uh, people and also the YIMBY Law letter in front of us that um, this could be a, this could bring lawsuit to us, or are we doing something that's legal? Because um, a resolution is not an ordinance, and as being pointed out by the uh, speakers and the YIMBY Law letter, that I would, I want to maybe ask our attorney Heather to um, comment on this. And I'm, I'm sure Heather, you have a letter from the YIMBY Law too, right?
Yes, um, we've reviewed that letter. And so, um, the, this is adopting a housing program by resolution. We're not um, attempting to amend the zoning code at this time. That would occur later. And as um, our special counsel Barb Kautz explained in her presentation, that um, AB two-three-four-five states that the city does not um, need to provide the bonuses if offered in that legislature, in that legislation, if it has adopted a housing program or an ordinance or both. And so we are here adopting the housing program, which can be done by resolution. I will say that you have received a threat of litigation, and even though we believe what council is doing is legal, that does not mean you will not be sued for it.
Okay, is that um, your deliberation at this point, Councilmember Wei?
Okay, so my quest, second question is, I am very new to this council, so I would like to ask about the process. As Connie has mentioned, that the process for a ordinance usually comes from, you know, um, Housing Commission and or Planning Commission, then go to the council. But we are not doing ordinance. We're doing a resolution. So that's why this is not in conflict with the process that we're doing?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay, uh, very good. So we'll leave you at two forty. Um, John. So, and I'll point out, you, you did go over a few minutes on your, um, a couple of minutes rather, uh, on your question. So you have three minutes of deliberation.
Okay, so my, my comments are really, um, you know, we all know that there's a housing shortage in the Bay Area. And we all want to facilitate as much housing as we can. I feel a little bit disappointed in some of the verbiage that gets used. We do want to uh, make as much housing as we can. But we also have to recognize, first and foremost, we're in a democracy. We are in a democracy that elects the leaders to represent the residents. And so we, as the elected people by the residents, have a duty to do our best to represent those residents and meet the state requirements, meet our Rena goals in a way that the residents will support it. And not to just flip over and say, gee whiz, it doesn't matter what the residents that elected us want. We're just going to go and do these things that these other people say. You know, this is a democracy. At no time has it been more important to respect democracy. And yes, we will have to find how to zone our city for the six thousand units that are going to be required of us, and we'll do that. And we will have to have extensive engagement with our community to find out how, how best they will support it. And that's what we're trying to do here. Represent the community in a very democratic way. And so I'll leave it with that. I, I have to, I have to represent the people that asked me to come and represent them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. You have forty-five seconds. Um, and so who's next? Uh, we have Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, you went over on your questions by about three minutes, so unfortunately, you only have uh, two minutes of deliberative time. And I'll, I'll keep that time. I'm not sure if you realize you're muted still.
Okay. So, but I have to clarify the record for Cupertino. We have five, identified five housing elements sites for this cycle. Three years ahead of the eight years cycle, we have approved all five sites. And a lot of these critics, critics of Cupertino never heard about these other projects, because no one opposed it. Hempstead accommodates six hundred more units. West, uh, Westport accommodates uh, as three thousand, three hundred units, Marina three, two-three hundred units. And they are all approved, but they are not built. All we can do is approve the housing, and they are market rate. They have some low-income housing also. And the only thing that's built is a hundred percent affordable housing. Cupertino has always been a trying to support more affordable housing. And tonight's agenda, if we look at this table, actually, this is from the AB twenty, from that state law. And the, the, the housing program we are considering today, for each percentage of density bonus, we will be requiring more affordable housing units, not less, more. And then also, this is a passage from the staff report. And the city is concerned that this state law will actually de-identify, the remove the benefits of another bill, AB seventeen sixty-three, that will actually require a hundred percent affordable, affordable housing for eighty percent bonus. So we are trying to move favor the, the path that will actually provide us more affordable housing, because we are really facing affordable housing crisis.
You have another ten seconds.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, very good. Councilmember Moore, you have four minutes.
Okay, um, well, I, I kind of want to address some of the comments that I heard from the public. There's been a mischaracterization, particularly of the Valco project. As we know, because it has so much office, that you will have about seventy-five hundred employees. It has two thousand four hundred and two residential units, leaving five thousand individuals needing to find housing elsewhere while they call this a housing project. Also, because the concessions or waivers, if you will, enabled the developer to have only small, uh, less than four hundred square foot studios and around five hundred and twenty-eight square foot one bedrooms units. It is uh, not helping families who might have more than one child. In fact, you could foresee those families being in overcrowded conditions and which is not really what we are trying to do. Our uh, below-market-rate program is supposed to provide the same number of bedrooms and the same square footage as the market-rate units and disperse those units, and that's being taken. bedrooms and the same square footage as the market rate units and disperse those units. And that's being taken as a concession. Overall, it's been very troubling to see the mischaracterization of these housing laws. And what we saw with the Valco project is that they used a housing law in order to worsen the housing shortage in Cupertino. And I agree with the proposed resolution that we have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for keeping your time. You still have two and a half minutes. So at this point, we have gone through, we've all made deliberative comments. I'll make mine briefly. I also agree that this is a housing program that we have considered on the basis of the idea of how do we deliver a more effective solution to the housing crisis. I do highly recommend that people looking on examine the staff report. And also consider sincerely some of the comments that have been made by my colleagues on council with regard to the evolution of proposals in Cupertino where something like a relatively denser office proposal eventually ends up without the square footage that will, in fact exacerbate the need for housing, but delivers more housing units. This is part of the arc of that process. And so I very much welcome people from the outside parts of our community to come in and share their perspectives. I think it's a very valuable part of the process of deliberating and considering the various perspectives by our council. However, I do ask for fairness. There are certainly points that are being raised on the side of the residents here on our council where we point out that, look, there are extreme financial pressures with regard to the lucrative nature of real estate in this area. And so when we're really examining a problem and we're trying to figure out what is appropriate for our community to be able to deliver what really is the heavy need in affordability, what are the practical realities of how we can go about getting from point A where we have projects that really, you know, if we're all honest about it, take these financial pressures and then ultimately translate these into bills that do conceitedly build some housing, but then provide other elements that, you know, heretofore, you know, prior to the current, you know, widespread pandemic and economic crisis have been very lucrative. And so, you know, we sit at a time right now where we don't know precisely what the incentives financially will be for office. But we do know that we're at a point where we would still like to support the development of affordable housing. And I think if you really examine our reasons and you look at the trajectory of how we've developed our approvals over the course of the last several years, we are on an arc to deliver solutions to the housing crisis. You know, personally, I don't appreciate people coming in and pointing their fingers and saying that very legitimate environmental measures and very legitimate concerns with what are very truthfully dollar-driven, developer-friendly laws that call themselves housing laws, you know, are somehow very vituperatively cast as things that we as a community have you know, very, very negative, you know, positions towards in terms of trying to, trying to resolve. I think it's very fair to say that Cupertino is a community of solutions. And I see this as a good faith effort to try to develop more housing stock in that fits better with what could be a feasible solution in Cupertino. So as a result, I'll be, I'll be supporting this. And I feel that we're at a point right now where we can certainly start that discussion. I think people need to look very carefully at what is going to be happening with respect to the economy. But it is clear that the need for the housing is there, especially when the expenses remain very high. So I see that I have 30 seconds left. If there are other people on council that would like to further deliberate at this point, please feel free to raise your hand. I see Councilmember Way has her hand up. So Councilmember Way.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I think you have a couple, I have a couple of minutes. So I'd like to conclude this as far I understand it. We are adopting this resolution as a housing program so that we can have our local control that we don't have to subject to AB 2345. And I think it is a step toward up because we are upping our our percentage of affordable housing, even though it's not up to 50%. But I do want to cautious, we did hear from Heather that we are in good standing, but it doesn't mean that we are not going to be sued by other organizations feeling that we are in violation of the law because ordinances needs to go to planning and come here. And so if AB 2345 does offer that we can have a resolution housing program in addition, but not an ordinance in order to be exempt from it, then I think I'm okay with it. But I am truly worried and I agree with John that we need to respect democracy. But also as a governing board, we are responsible for our governance and then we want to avoid lawsuits in all power we could. And I do believe AB 2045, the intention is to have more affordable housing. So we are going to 40%, which we are offering affordable housing. I know my council fellow colleagues all, our hearts is for affordable housing. So I'm hoping that today's resolution, today's resolution that we passed, we're not going to attract a lawsuit because that's always not good for the governance and, you know, money is in short. And that we are, our heart is for affordable housing. And so it like, like Mayor said, we're looking for solutions. So I think I'm okay with the 40% because it's a step toward right direction, even though it's not quite 50%. But these are incentives for developers to build affordable housing, which we are all passionate about.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. That leaves you with 45 seconds. And is there anyone else who would like to deliberate further at this point before we call the question for the motion that's on the table? Seeing no hands raised, I would like to ask the city clerk to take a roll call vote of the motion.
Councilmember Moore?
I'm sorry. Now I see that Councilmember Moore does have her hand up. Councilmember Moore, would you like to make some final comments? After I withdraw the request to our city clerk with apologies with regard to this motion?
Thank you. Just briefly, with regards to affordable housing, what we need is funding for it and providing more market rate housing is not the answer. We need to have the funding for the affordable units to get those built. As someone brought up the veranda earlier tonight, those units were 350 square feet each. They cost nearly $800,000 a piece to build. So we need the funding for affordable units.
Very good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Way now has her hand up.
I think I have 45 seconds, Mayor. So I'm going to use it. I do believe we need all levels of housing, not just affordable housing. We do need housing for, you know, market rate, housing for moderate income housing. So I'm hoping that our city would go step forward for housing for all, I mean, going to all levels of housing. Of course, affordable housing is always, are passionate. And also, I, I, that's, I think that's all I want to say.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Now I see Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, you have 10 seconds.
Okay, yeah. So I would like to urge all the friends who are here today. We have five housing projects approved that not built since 2016. So please go advocate to those project developers. Build them since we have approved them. Please ask them to build them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. And seeing no more piling on by Councilmember Willie. Appreciation. I will return to the city clerk. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call vote for the motion on the table.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Hey, thank you very much. We're at 11:10. You know, I do have a promise to get done by midnight, but I don't want to torture people. If anyone would like to take a three minute break, please let me know. I see a hand raised. Okay, so we're at 11:10. Let's come back here promptly at 11:14. And we'll go to our final enumerated agenda item number 13. Thank you. We'll see you in three minutes.